Got to play with it. Okay, want to open the planning board meeting of September 19th at 7:31.
So motion?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimous. Okay, second thing, we need to approve the minutes of 9:517. Here they are, I sent them to you, everybody read them and, okay.
So motion?
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimous. No bills, any sign offs? None again. We got to look into that. Estee Park subdivision withdrawal. Many moons ago.
Yep, I remember that.
On September 7th, oh wait a minute, he has a date on this, April 5th, 2017. Fearing an adverse decision by the Board of Appeals, they decided to split Estee Park into two lots. And they filed a subdivision plan with it. And they sent in a fee of $2,500 to cost of an independent review, and that was never done, so... Because they got what they wanted in the next meeting, so...
Motion to accept withdrawal.
Okay, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Billis Way is not going to come, they had the Mylars ready. Adam Casa, the lawyer, wants to look over the plans and everything first before, you know, bringing it into us. So that's going to occur on October 3rd. Let's see, let's jump to another page. Let's see. Groblin Electric.
For the record, I'm Woody Cammott, PE, office at 297 Elm Street, Ainsbury. With me tonight is Kevin Snow, the manager of the Groblin Municipal Light Department. We're in the third phase of the rehabilitation of the building on Salem Street. And the final phase is basically the paving of the driveway storage area to the rear of the building. Also along the side toward Georgetown, which is currently all gravel based, it was never paved by the previous owner. So we have come up with a set of construction drawings and design drawings for paving that area. And in doing so, we're complying with the stormwater management regulations of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, even though we do not have a filing with the Conservation Commission. All of the activity, all of the construction is greater than 100 feet from wetlands. So there is no reason to go to the Conservation Commission. So basically, we're here tonight to discuss the land disturbance general bylaw that the planning board had put into effect at town meeting many years ago. One of the descriptions of exempt surfaces is driveways and such. We also believe that since we, in the bylaw, the planning board has the discretion to vote that this plan does not need to come to the planning board under the bylaw, since it meets all state, federal, and state regulations. We are filing a need, we will be filing, we've done a SWIP plan, stormwater prevention plan. There is an erosion and sedimentation control plan in there. The stormwater detention basin is approximately 10,000 square feet of disturbance. So we're under the 20,000 square feet in the bylaw. So we're at, basically, first thing we're doing is providing the board with a full set of the plans to show what we're doing is correct. We will be repaving everything that's gravel out there. They have combined this lot with a lot that is under control with the municipal light department. So we've brought the entire lot into conformance for zoning. So there's no zoning issues as well. So what we're asking the board to do is, since we are complying with EPA's and PDS permits, we are complying with the stormwater management bylaw and regulations in the state of Massachusetts, that we be ruled exempt from filing for a land disturbance bylaw application. I'll answer any questions the board has.
Comment your motion.
Do you have any questions?
I don't either. What are your, your motion?
What's it going to just be a retention?
Motion to waive land disturbance requirement because they're complying with the...
No increase in runoff whatsoever between post and pre-development.
Land disturbance and stormwater, or just land disturbance?
The bylaw is entitled... It's chapter 14. Stormwater management and land disturbance bylaw, chapter 14. The administrative section we're asking to vote on for the record is 14.6.2.
Call for a vote.
Now we get a motion, Lolly Sorensen, her second, or Lisa Chandler, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, unanimous. We're ruling right along.
It's nice and easy.
Can we have a, give us one, one you can drop off, just so we...
One's final, final review, I brought it up.
Okay. That's going to actually help that site a lot, it's pretty... You've done a nice job, by the way.
Thank you.
I know the site well, so...
There's still a ways to go, but it's getting there.
Yeah, no, you're doing a good job.
Groblin Auto going to continue to stay there for the time being, or?
For the time being, as far as I know.
Yeah.
Since we got you there, what's the, what's the plan for future rebates for types of LED fixtures and savings to town residents that put, businesses that put them in?
We don't have anything in the books right now. That would, stuff like that usually comes from outside company. We deal with Energy New England, they don't have any plans in place right now.
Right.
And they offer something in the future.
How about MassSafe, can you go through those?
MassSafe is private companies, so, Gedital, Eversource.
Got it. Not municipals, okay, got it. Okay, then answers that question that I asked.
Sorry, can't help you on that one. We'll get something in place.
Good, thank you.
Thank you very much, you have a great night. Thank you, Woody.
Thanks, I will see you next week.
See you next week.
Says cul-de-sac change.
Jim, did you want to discuss Sunset?
Sure, yeah, why don't we do that? We're gonna, we're gonna do the, we gotta do it off camera, that's probably... See, it's not on the agenda, that's probably...
Do we do it under whole business and take this first? I'll stick around if you want to do it.
If you could.
Rather get a decision out of the board so we can keep going with it.
Well, I think if you're going to be able to do it under what I told you is there, I mean, that's fine.
Why don't you just stick around and we'll discuss and get a board vote.
Yeah, okay, all right. All right, next up, we're going to take Sunset Circle.
Okay.
Tony's supposed to be here, said he's coming around 8 o'clock. So Jim Hardgraves is here, he's the engineer on the project. At some point, when we get the ASB, you're going to have to do that because you were the engineer of record. And...
Tim, do you have that other plan that we're missing? The one with the easement plan that shows the two-foot wall and all the requirements that Scott did?
I have the copy of the definitive...
No, not the definitive plan, the easement plan. Scott did it.
Scott drew it?
I don't know if Scott drew it, the engineer drew it, but Scott had it that put the notes on it, so...
Yeah, we showed a 4:1 slope.
No, 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 there's a separate easement plan with this that indicates the two-foot, two-foot stone wall on Tony's property, the fence, and some language. Do you have that with you?
I do not have that.
Do you have it in your possession somewhere?
Yes.
Okay, we need a copy of that because that seems to be one of the things that we're looking at. It's all in the minutes and it mentions it, but we don't have a copy of the plan. And that's where Scott wrote all the requirements on there. The two-foot stone wall, the fence behind it, and that to be satisfactory to the board and to the landowner.
Right.
So, and that's, you know, we just need that.
I understand, so one thing I'd like to do is just start the ball rolling, maybe formulate a punch list between the meeting between myself and Jim, or whoever, to address their concerns.
Now, were you the GC on the job too?
No.
No, so who was running the job?
Well, as we know, it started with Scott Green, and it was run over by another outfit out of Newton.
Yeah, so who's...
Yeah, I figured...
Who's clerk of the works on that one now?
What was the guys that was up there with us?
I was never made the clerk, but I was very tired of doing consulting.
I can't think.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we had some, you know, in the memorandum, there's some things that need to get addressed. But one of the biggest concerns that, because we're going backwards into this thing, is that no one called or sent the board in writing 10 days prior to the milestones and like the finish code, somebody just went out and did it. And that's where we got all these issues, no one was out there checking it because we didn't know. So it was just one, obviously it wasn't you, but somebody should have been reading the memorandum to know that they had to do that, along with some of the trees and, and the stone wall and...
Oh, here it is.
All that stuff.
Well, we had sent a letter, and basically in that letter, or I'd sent a letter to... I got one page of it, I think, and missing some stuff. Yeah, I only got the one page. And we weren't really getting any retorts whatsoever all from Wallace. And I think that's why you're here tonight, is to go over what I had sent. And they're real concerns, I mean, Tony's going to be coming in, he sent... How is it number, four different concerns in and everything, so it has more to do with what originally was evidently on the plan, but his, the signed plan only showed the fence, but it showed it in the caption as well, and we don't know, well, where's the fence going to go?
Right, so I guess what you could do, address the concerns, what, something else?
Why don't we come to that when he gets here, maybe start on some of these other things? And let me, let me read this, did you, did you get a copy of this?
I did.
You did, okay. The planning board has not received the seven copies of the signed approved definitive plan Mylar that requested from Scott Green.
And the discs.
Bobby ran one, he got online out of the registry of deeds, and we printed out on our plotter. But it's kind of a fuzzy one in a sense, it shows everything, it shows all the signatures, every, you know, who signed it and everything. But, you know, it's, on that, it doesn't, it did not show the guardrail, and it did not show the wall. Now, the only wall it showed was the blocks in the back of Tony's property line to the neighbor. That's, that was the only wall that was on that plan. So I, I mean, I can go and get it if we need to look at it.
That might be helpful.
Okay, all right, let's take, take a little break and I'll go do that.
Yeah, and there's three copies of disc that didn't come either. That's in the regs.
So if I were to take the plan that made it to the dean's office and make Mylars out of that, seven Mylars?
No, not Mylars, just seven, it's supposed to be seven certified copies.
Yeah, that was my conclusion, because it, it all says Mylars.
Yeah, okay.
So I can make you seven copies of these.
Certified copies. So you got to go, they're supposed to be all certified from the registry, so you got to go print them off.
Get out of the registry and I'll print off seven copies again.
Okay, so then, then, and make sure the registry has the stamp on it, on each one. And then the discs, so we can distribute those. Yeah, three discs. And that, that other plan is the one that has the detail on the wall, the fence, and all the language that goes with it, and that, was that recorded, was our question. I mean, we know it exists, you know it exists, you got a copy.
I believe that was the one that was recorded.
Yeah.
In my conversation with Tony George. If you guys really want that to be built, you could look into something a little different.
Well, that's what it is, I'm talking, I'm talking about, there's a, in the minutes it references an easement plan, and it's separate than these plans, it's an actual easement plan. And in it, it details a two-foot stone wall above grade with a fence behind it. And it's in the minutes, and this is where we did it.
Let me see if it's part of this set.
Yeah.
No, it's not part of that set, because I went through this for three hours at the last meeting and found, found the languages to where it was and what Scott did.
I found some things too, and there's things that you were at meetings and everything, and you were there. And you, you heard what Bob was doing with everything, okay? And he changed a lot of things. And you're, you're just forgetting everything, I can tell you.
This is what was, what we were thinking with it too.
That's the one that's recorded.
So there's the wall that I'm...
We're talking the wall from here to here.
That, that was negotiated around Scott Green.
Right, but it's part of your subdivision, and it was in the, it's in the easement plan.
This was what was, what we were planning on building here.
Okay, you have an additional wall, two-foot, front corner, back corner. It's in the easement plan, okay? And it's mentioned in the minutes, and Scott did it, and it was all part of the approval. My question is, where, what did he do with that plan?
I can bring that in.
Okay. And that's what, that's what we're trying to get, because it has language with it too. It doesn't just have a pretty picture, it's got a, it's got language with particulars like the memorandum as to how it's supposed to be built, two feet above grade going down, with the fence behind it, and the reason was so that snow, ice, and vehicles would hit the wall first before hitting the fence and ending up in his backyard.
Okay, so I guess what we're trying to figure out is what, what needs to be...
Was that recorded?
That's what we're trying to find out. He, he said yes, this is recorded, but it's all in the minutes, and that Scott did it. Is a separate plan.
If you read that stuff, that's where they began to eliminate it, okay? Because they put fabric under the road because they were worried about the road when the garbage trucks would come in there, because of that type of sand that's in there.
That wasn't for that, it was for vehicles.
Exactly.
And mentions a two-foot.
But they also took it right over the banking as well.
Did you submit to the, the rest of the board those minutes that I found?
I saw them, but I don't know what dates they are.
Okay. Did you send them that email?
No, I did not.
Okay.
I got it around 6 o'clock tonight.
Okay.
We got to go by what's recorded.
Yeah.
It was recorded in the minutes, it was supposed to be recorded, and it's part of the easement, so...
Unless the developer wants to change it, you know?
Yeah, we'll get to that discussion, okay? But literally, I have to go with this plan that we signed first, okay? And the things we see as a problem right now, that's what I want to talk about first. We can come back to that when Tony gets here.
Okay.
Okay? Because it goes this way and it goes that way, and that's, that's the problem. And I need to get him to say what he wants and how he wants it. Because I can tell you right now, I've been there with him, and I don't know.
Yeah, I don't think he wants what was recorded.
Okay, well, we'll get to it. All right, so it's the seven copies of this that we'd like to get, okay? I mean, the...
I thought it was six that we had passed.
No, it's seven, we get, let me tell you, we're giving those things out, everybody wants one now. Okay, I mean, you got electric, you got water, you got assessors, you got Board of Health gets it, you get one, we get one, somebody else gets one, I know that. So, that's got to show up, okay? Just hasn't come in the door. No, yes. All right. The signed waiver from Tony, we don't have that, we don't know.
I never saw it either.
I never saw it either. So it's green kind of disappearing so long?
What Tony, the, the letter that Tony sent, I'll read that later, but basically, he's saying his wife had dementia at the time, she signed it when he walked out of the room.
All right, so he admitted signing it.
Yeah, but, we don't know what's in it. So we don't know what's right, what's wrong at this point, Bob, that's the problem.
So he signed a waiver, and he admitted to it, yeah?
Yes. Yeah.
But now he wants to change...
By the way, this is Bob Wallace.
Oh, you're Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Oh, okay, thanks for coming. Who's the, who's the clerk of the words on that? Who's running the operation on that subdivision?
Now, I don't own it anymore.
You don't own it anymore?
No, I sold the three houses.
So who owns the road?
Well, you own the road, you own the road.
Chris Morano, Chris Morano.
Chris Morano?
Yeah.
Okay, was he given a copy of the memorandum of decision that goes with that? One of the major problems that we have, which is why you have this giant list this far down the line, because this should have been handled a lot before, is that in the memorandum of decision on every single milestone in there, someone was supposed to notify the planning board in writing prior to events happening? That's, you know, I mean, we're missing drains, we're missing manholes, we're missing all kinds of stuff. That should have all been checked as that was going in, 10 days prior to that going in, in writing to the board, so we could be there to check it and go with it with the plan. You should have been there too. That never happened, and things just, like the top coat was put down, nobody even knew about it. I mean, and we've got all kinds of crown issues and everything that we're going to be talking about. We got a fire hydrant in somebody's front lawn. We've got, you know, just finish issues, but all of that was supposed to have been reviewed prior to happening 10 days before, and I'm wondering, did someone not read that? Or did they ignore it? And unfortunately, your name's on most stuff, so, it was just a question, but that's why we have a list like this in a subdivision that should be done. And I, and I know this is one of the longest ones running for a small subdivision, it's like 10 years. But, but we have some serious problems with it, and we can't seem to get a hold of you. You know, we can't seem to get a hold of you on some stuff, so, so as we're going. So, okay, so that answers that question, thank you.
All right. All right, I'm going to jump to some of the latest concerns that we ran into was, there's a hill that goes down to Dartmouth Street, it's quite a long hill from the cul-de-sac. And what we're fearful of right now is that, because we had some kids on bikes going down it. I haven't seen any bike marks for a few weeks now, so maybe the police did chase them after a while. But that, that slope of that hill, I don't know why Scott dug the whole hill out. I still can't figure that out. They had to attach down to a water line onto Dartmouth Street. I mean, if he, if he took out maybe a five to six-foot area, it would have done it. Not a 30-foot area, you know? So it's, they had planted some of the cover along Tony George, that bankment by Tony George on the banking, that kind of ground cover, nine more of those got in. I don't want to put trees in there because the slope is such, they're allowed to just, the roots will go and everything. But it, it needs more cover to start growing, that's all. And I, I see some things poking up out of the ground and everything, but I don't know how fast that's going to happen, that could be years, I don't know. I mean, it looks good, but it's, it's erosion problems I worry about all day. Some of the recently planted trees seem to be browning on their tops, it's not happening anymore. The bags of water were all empty, I asked a builder, I was talking to the builder at the time, and he said that they had asked him to put the water in the bags. That's not his job. You know, so I don't...
We did a lot for him that was on our job, just so you know.
All right, but Nixon was the guy that was supposed to put the water in the bags. It seemed like there were water in the bags of, probably five days ago. Today, when I was up there, because I wanted to see what was happening with the ponding again. And they were empty. I picked them, I just picked them up like, and they went right up the tree. There's no water in them whatsoever at all. The, the road doesn't have any sort of distinct crown in it whatsoever at all. It really looks flat. I mean, most roads even with a crown look flat. But you will, when you walk over them and everything, you'll feel that crown, you know it's there. And what's that's doing is, not all the water reaches the drains. And what I did was, I just do a drift test with a 4,200-pound vehicle. I just get it to where it's going down a hill, take the foot off the brake and let it go. And it's, it's, I've done this in all the subdivisions over the years that got any incline whatsoever at all. And on the two drains that come in from the street, the first two drains, when I go down the hill from the cul-de-sac, I'm stopping dead probably about six feet from the drains. If I come in on both sides of the road, if I come in from Salem Street, I go right over them by about 10 to 15 feet. That, that part works, but it's almost like, were they supposed to come back further? I can't tell, you know, it's just, I went up there today in the rain, okay? Because I wanted to see, was the water reaching the drains? It was reaching the drains both ways. Actually, when it comes in from, you know, the Salem Street end, it goes right in, it's coming down like fury. But the other one, it's dragging as it gets to, but it was coming down. And I was kicking everything out of the way, whether it was leaves, or sand, or anything. And that's another problem, is there's sand eroding from the planting areas. It's, it's just coming out, going into the street. So, just so you know. Uh, let's see.
So neither of you two were notified about the paving?
I'm not done, Wally.
I'm just asking a question of what you just brought up.
Yeah, Wally, can I ask the questions? Okay, now, there's an outflow area between what we call lots two and three. Okay, this is the house that burned, and the one at the end of the cul-de-sac. If you go back there, I mean, there's a big pipe, it's probably that, you know, 12-inch diameter and everything. It's probably up about a foot, maybe a foot and a half. And as it comes out, all it's laying in, the area that's supposed to catch are pebbles. I mean, it needs riprap in there, okay? I think there needs, definitely needs to be further reseeding in the planting areas along this street, and also in the cul-de-sac. I mean, the cul-de-sac looks terrible. I mean, it's, somebody cut the grass, I don't know who cut the grass, but, you know, I mean, it was up about yay high. If you want to call it grass, it's more like weeds.
I think it's a beautiful cul-de-sac. It's a beautiful subdivision.
Have you actually been there?
Excuse me?
I'm, I'm serious, have you been there? Have you seen the, the issues that are there? Have you seen the fire hydrant in the person's front lawn?
That's all I got, I was because the muscle missing the dam.
Okay, can you explain how an entire manhole's missing?
That's been, that's been installed.
But how did it, how big was that?
It was installed.
It has been installed.
Right, but how...
I mean, I, I'm not playing the finger, but Scott Green's not here, maybe I can, but he skipped.
Right, so how big is that structure?
It's huge.
Okay, like six feet by four feet, or three feet by three feet, or...
The diameter's probably eight feet diameter and it's probably six feet deep.
So this is what I mean, I, I mean, appearance-wise, I mean, the houses look pretty.
They look great.
And, okay, but the underlying of that construction is horrible. I mean, how do you miss a structure like that? We also have other issues, how did that fire hydrant get in there?
It's in, it's in.
It's, I understand that it's in, but it got missed because the milestones, this is what I was talking about. You should have been there with notification on that, our engineer should have been there during these milestones, and they weren't. Because you guys didn't notify anyone that you were doing the work.
You know what we couldn't, I could, I could sit here and tell you how many towns I've sat in front of, and I could, I could sit here and tell you how you guys have, how it's transpired.
How what's transpired?
How this whole deal has kind of transpired, but that's not helpful. Do you see what I mean? So I could sit here, I could sit here and say, I have investments all over the East Coast.
Welcome to Groblin. We care about the Groblin residents.
I'm talking, I'm going to talk, and then you talk, that's how we're going to do it, so...
Excuse me, are you addressing the board?
Yes.
I wasn't done with pointing out what I was trying to do, and here you are in violation of so many regulations going through. No, I was still talking, sir, okay? You're in violation of so many regulations because you didn't read the memorandum of decision that went through. Okay, you're in violation of so many regulations because you didn't read the memorandum of decision that went through. There were so many things that were just done, somebody just did them. If you're missing enormous structures, I mean, that's huge. Okay, matter of fact, I can't even recall in twenty-five years where one of those was ever missed before. I also cannot remember in twenty-five years of no one notifying the board in writing in ten years, even though it's in your own memorandum, before you do such things, so those things are prevented. I also know that you have been delinquent in getting in here. The chairman has tried several times to get you in here before to point some of these things out. We're addressing issues that never should be addressed this far down the line. We're missing plans. You have trees in the wrong locations. And now we have a crowning problem on the road with drainage and outflow that never should've occurred. And what I was trying to get across is, I don't care what other towns that you go to, I don't care about your other investments. I care about the citizens of Groveland because that's who I work for. And I work for this board. And I haven't seen a subdivision go this way that's so small, and it still has issues this far down the line. And you can wipe that smirk off your face. Okay, because this is... I am talking to a developer who's in violation.
Sir, you're not gonna talk to me like that.
Then you can leave.
You can wipe this smirk off your face.
Yeah, I see the smirking over there. I hope the cameras got that too.
That's okay. Do me a favor, okay? Show some respect, okay? I'm sitting here, I said to you I would listen, I haven't talked.
And show some respect yourself.
Show some respect, okay?
Excuse me. That respect goes both ways.
Show some respect.
Wally, I'd rather address this situation.
So would I.
Just address the issues. Never mind what they did do and then they correct.
I'd like to stick to the issues that we do have, and I says, we do want to get resolved, okay? And the road is the biggest concern because we, when we take that over, and it won't be taken over for probably from here, I would say almost close to two years, probably a year and nine months, okay? We cannot take it over legally. The town meeting has to do it. That's how Groveland works. Okay, so we can't sign anything excepting a road. Okay, we can't do it. Alright, we can, we can sign an as-built of a subdivision plan, which includes the road. But that's it. And that's what the engineer's gonna check. But I wanna make sure that the road is acceptable to take on, okay? What we did not see also was when the final coat was applied to the binder code, there's no tack out in the street. And that's not gonna hold. That is a worry and our concern. Except what we look for is all the tack that's out in the street once the trucks have cleared and everything. It's not there.
Okay, can I ask a question? So you wait for two years to take over roads from subdivisions?
We can wait longer if we want to. And it's up to the town meeting.
What's the typical, what's the typical timeframe that you wait to take over a road?
Well, it's a town meeting. It's the annual town meeting that does it, and that's usually held the end of April.
Yeah.
Okay, so when you did that was sometime, I believe, I don't know why you were doing it, in July and August. But the reality is, from that period on, it's one year, we will take a look at that road. From then on, it would go to the road commissioner, okay, who would then go before the Board of Selectmen to put it on a list to go into the town meeting for acceptance. Now, the town meeting doesn't have to accept it. And I can tell you that right now.
So I understand where you're coming from? Okay. I just asked a simple question. On average, when do you take over roads, just two years?
Well, it depends when, generally what we have...
About two years?
Yeah, about that.
But we're gonna plow it this winter because there'll be, all the houses will be full. And we have a bylaw that town passed years ago that we're not liable for any damages plowing. Because you'll still be actually have the bond security if there is damages, which there probably, there won't be. So you don't have to worry about that. We're gonna plow it this winter. You did last year. Because when there's residents, there's garbage pickup, trash pickup, mail delivery.
The people who are being penalized by this is the residents. That's who's being penalized by this, but whatever. So why don't we just go through, we'll continue to go through. What do we need to do? You tell us, without all the wonderful...
We like to solve that ponding issue. And when Nixon was up there, I suppose he was the guy that did that job. We showed him a couple of things we saw. And it was just me and Bobby up there. It wasn't the whole board. So, I mean, we found other things later on. The ones that are more concerned is what's going down that hill to the ones up by the street. Because if it's gonna lay there for, if it keeps laying there, it'll erode. That's what they do. Now, it looks like what we did see was they pushed some high top up on the sides. Because you could see it a little higher on the granite. Now, what Nixon said to me was, they would heat that, and it would scour it off and everything, so that you would have a little bit more level surface going down. It wasn't gonna hold it. But we don't think that's been done whatsoever at all. I've been up there so many times it isn't funny. And the only time...
I'm following you guys. If you guys could just tell us what you wanna do, then we'll do it.
Well, we'd like them back in there, and we'll meet them. We need to know when they're gonna show up.
No, 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 I didn't ask you that. If you could tell us when, what you want us to do, we'll look at it.
Is it, is it possible since we have the review engineer in the room too, to have him put together what needs to be done so that the engineers can talk, and then you can get your certified list as to what you need done specifically, other than, you know, fix the crown in the road, and we can make recommendations as to, you know, what and where? And then just get a punch list going so we can get this thing done? I mean, that's, I don't think that we're qualified to come up with, I mean, Bobby probably more than us, but to go in there and to, which way to pitch the road and how at this point?
There needs to, they fixed one big puddle in front of a driveway. They just have to do this another spot. They have their own infrared heater and they fixed it.
Yeah, there's like seven spots. I have it on a map.
Yeah, well, I don't think there's seven now, though. I think it's for some reason.
Well, I don't know if they've been up there.
Well, I can make with the paper and have a conversation.
Well, we got some other... And like, there's no flared end on the drainage. Riprap, you know, behind the house that burnt.
Yeah.
This...
These are all very doable.
Yeah, they're not hard, and they're not costly.
I don't know, I missed that too, that flared end.
Yeah, all of this is doable. My point was that we're doing it twice because we didn't get the heads up. If we did get the heads up call for ten days prior, I think everybody would've been on site and we would've, we would've caught it.
Nixon used to call me and say they were doing work there. He did, so...
I mean, the other thing is, we only got ten days left in September. I mean, some grass seed oughta go down. I mean, that's not a big thing. Rake it and seed it. You know, it's real easy to do that.
The trees, the trees are healthy.
Yeah, they looked healthy. I mean, at one point, at one point, they were getting brown on the top.
I think the trees are doing good. No, the trees are fine.
And those brown bags that sit around, some of them, they don't seem to have any water on them whatsoever at all. I don't know what they're there for.
Some of the days I've been there, the bags have been tall, but I mean, at least the trees stayed alive.
Yeah.
Did you add more trees on that, on that water easement area? Because there was the three up front and then...
I have an as-built at the current conditions. And that was dropped off today. And probably, I'm sure they've gone to look at it. So, yeah. There's one I have right there, and there are the three trees, so it sounds like you might want some more in here.
Yeah, it's good to get down.
Well, no, they're centered. I mean, they're a little bit, they look better, they're more in the center of that.
I would have to say that the cul-de-sac has got a plethora of trees, which is, I mean, it looks pretty nice. But it's, but we wish that, one of the things that had we known when the trees were going down, we would've, you know, you would've taken a few of these here and put them over here to plug that gap in that area. And then they're all in the, in the sidewalk green area instead of on the, on the people's lawn, so...
If it was me, I'd rather have something on that banking that's low.
Low, because...
Because a tree ain't gonna help it. A tree can go down. So I'd rather, I'd rather have something low. Like is on the banking by Tony George's lot. I mean, those things will grow in all over the place eventually, so...
And does anybody know why that, why that swath went so wide to bring in a water main?
Similar to what happened with the location of the fire hydrant, I believe. There was a lot of coordination between Scott Green and the water department during that.
Yeah, because that's, yeah, we're gonna put a pole or something in front of it? Because if the guy does slip off the drive in ice, it's, he's gonna take out the hydrant. And it's that close.
They wanted it there, the water department did. But the, the reason why that banking was wide is because the big excavator, they're gonna cut through.
Did you need a big excavator?
Yeah.
I mean...
You're going up with eight inch...
Yeah, no, that it is.
You gotta go down deeper.
I get that, yeah.
You gotta go six feet deep. You need like a, like a fifty foot ladder.
So we just gotta, you know, stabilize it back in, that's all. It's just a, it's just a pretty wide swath.
You go short, the ocean will be all over.
You what?
You go short, the ocean will be all over.
Right, exactly.
It's live sand.
Yeah.
Alright.
Did you, did we want, since we have an as-built now, do we wanna make a motion to get our review engineer to be eyeballing this and adding things to the list so we get it all done? Because I didn't know this came in today.
Well, it's a street acceptance plan, which we should not be doing.
Is that what you're calling it? I see it on the label.
We need a subdivision as-built plan.
Just change the...
Yeah, because this goes to, this is what would go to the town meeting.
At least you got a lot more to it. I mean, we got one in the other day. It's one page.
First of all, John, what is it? Because you're referring to Homestead.
Let's see what this was.
Is it a street acceptance plan and an as-built?
As-built, it's...
It is.
It's a roadway.
What?
Is it showing all the body set?
Homestead.
So it's all...
Is that acceptable to you?
Once I review it.
We won't look at it.
Okay.
Because it's a roadway.
He was referring to Homestead. They only submitted a...
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Street acceptance plan.
Oh, I see.
I left a phone call for Dino.
Since the board are here, let's show you.
No, that makes sense.
I think you gotta turn this thing down. I know you've got some problems.
So it's just a single sheet? Is that it?
I have a copy.
Okay. Alright, so do we, we wanna make that motion to bring in the review engineer to review the as-built street acceptance plan? And all, address the other issues that are outstanding? And put him into a so-called punch list?
Okay.
Well, we're going by the plan that's recorded in the registry, right? So the trees will put in the right spot. They put them in where there was record, in the...
Yeah, that's unfortunate. First time in over twenty years.
No, that's, that's why I got that cul-de-sac back on the agenda again, because we gotta change a lot of stuff on that.
Yeah, they're putting the right spot. The trees are right.
Typically, the trees, what we did is, we used to put them in, in that planting strip that you see out there between the sidewalk. Okay, and what has happened before in the past is that when the trees mature, they bust up the sidewalk. So what we did do over twenty years ago was we pulled them back. Same amount of trees, you just put them onto the people's lots.
Why did they approve it?
That is a good question. Okay, but typically, we catch it when it goes out, when the guy says, hey, today's the day we're treeing. The first tree goes in and we go, whoops.
Why don't we catch it on the plan so we know on the plan to prove?
Well, those are a better tree anyway. We had trouble with the, like crab apple trees that would pop up the sidewalks.
Pop up the sidewalks, oaks, that sort of thing.
Cleveland's and, they're, they don't root, they root deep.
They go down.
Yeah, they go down. So there are right where they are.
So, but it's just one of those things that, that's why we have that catch-all. Anything you do in ten days prior, or they're about as close as you can. That's why we're out there to, you know, if there are mistakes, we can catch them before, you know, everybody puts time in after and later.
On the next subdivision, we're gonna have to, nothing to do with this one. We're gonna have to...
Yeah, we've caught some things that we see.
Yeah, we're gonna have to go over that. I shouldn't be doing, you know, but in all fairness, Mr. Wallace's man, Jay, called me every, every time they were gonna do something.
We just missed some of the stuff then?
So we're gonna beat you up.
Okay.
Well, yeah, you can blame me, but the thing is, we're gonna, that's what I mean. After everyone's gone, we should talk about, like, getting an engineer to review milestones, you know?
Okay, so we get a, Jim, we get a motion?
Yes, you had, you made the motion to bring in the review engineer to review the as-built plan, but you're gonna turn this thing into as-built plan, subdivision as-built plan.
So a motion to, to...
Review the as-built.
And I pay for the review engineer?
Yeah, you already gave us the money.
Yeah.
You already gave us the money. Thank you.
How much is it?
Ten.
Ten what?
That's, you put ten in the pot.
Ten, ten what?
Thousand.
For what?
For the reviewer to review the as-built plan.
And who's the reviewer?
He's sitting right next to him.
Sitting right next to you.
Woody Taylor.
What is it, Woody?
Woody Cammon.
Cammon Engineering.
Reviewer the whole time?
Yes.
Because, because I, no offense, I, it's just been expensive.
That's because of Scott Green.
Yeah, yeah.
He changed things so much.
Let me tell you.
He did.
I didn't review any construction.
Normally, normally, I'm gonna tell you right now.
I never seen a guy change so much stuff.
You might see, you might see...
Yeah, but this stuff was, this was all his building work.
You might see seven times between a preliminary, conceptual, a preliminary, and a definitive plan. Seven meetings. I think I got him down for eighteen. And every time, he brought the review engi, he brought the reviewing engineer with him. I didn't, we didn't ask him to do that. He just kept coming in and coming in and coming in. And we kept telling him, you don't need to do this, okay? You need to go back and change the plan or something. That's all we were telling him. It is driving us nuts, believe me. I mean, it's, it's, we're at this stage now. Hopefully, we get to finish this thing up, because that's where I'd like to go. Okay, that's, we're on the same page.
It was an approved four-lot subdivision. He changed it.
He had four lots he could've built.
Yeah, there was a reason for that, and I think the town wanted him. It's someone, there was some conversation, I don't know.
It was an approved four-lot subdivision. It's approved already.
It was already engineered.
There was ninety-eight percent there, and there was a couple of waivers that, it appeared as though we needed to come to one more meeting. And the waiver was going to be accepted. It was getting back to the K-value around the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, the drainage.
Now, we couldn't really make that work. So, you know, that's why, that's why they'd see the cul-de-sac was tilted. They had to make it tilted because the rest of the site was sloped, so heavily to the rear and a few other things.
And then he could take the wall out too, if he went to three.
So...
I knew there was, saved some money with the wall.
Well, he saved, he saved money because of the affordable housing.
Not that wall. I meant that there was a bigger wall.
There was a bigger wall and that's, and then, remember when the first thing started with this lot over here that was supposed to be over there, and then the frontage switched over, and we're still gonna do something with that driveway thing.
And the rear down the base of the hill?
Yeah.
Yeah, something like that.
I mean, the other, the other thing he could've done was a modification of the original plan. I mean...
I told him to not do anything, and he didn't wanna listen.
Yeah.
No, that was the whole problem. He didn't listen to what it was either.
Then, once we got into three lots, there was more changes.
There was a redesign of the sum was.
Yeah.
And everything else opened up.
So that's why everything...
If he felt like four wasn't gonna work, but three would, you know what I would've done? I would've done a lot of line change.
Right.
That's all I would've done.
A lot changed?
A lot of line change. Eliminate a house. Move a lot of lines over, that's all. Bingo. You don't know what we went through.
Just a point of order. We got a motion and a second, so...
Who gave me the second? Who gave me the second?
I did.
Lisa did, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Okay. So you know what I wrote, you can take care of some of that, right? Okay, let us know when whoever's coming up, that's.
Woody, do you have a copy of this?
I'll, I'll give you my number. You want my number?
Yes.
Okay, it's nine, seven, eight, seven, five, eight, three, zero, six, six. Now, everybody in town knows it. Well, no, that's, that's the line I let them call. Everybody wants to know why the other line in the house, the landline, is blocked. There's a reason.
So still, we got a couple of things to, that we still gotta get that. Now, the Tony's here, we should open up the discussion for that with the wall.
Sure.
Find out what exactly it is, and, and you, have you seen recently that easement plan with the two-foot wall in it and the fence?
I'm not sure exactly which one you're talking about.
It's the only one that, that we saw.
Yeah, I'll have to pull it up just to make sure that we're talking about the same one.
Okay.
Well, you're talking about the rear of the property.
I'm talking about the side of the property.
We didn't, it's not on the plan we signed.
It's on the other plan, and that's what, that's what I found in the minutes, that's what I was trying to read to you. That's why I sent those out there.
What takes precedent is the plan that we signed that gets sent to the registry.
Not if that easement plan was recorded, just like the memorandum, they go side by side. And we have Mr. George here, so he can, he can present this in.
So, so two things, one, how, how is it gonna work in terms of us understanding what needs to be done, if we're doing the list, if we're doing the list as well?
Well, I have my list for tonight. We'll work on that. We'll do this here, suck them again.
You're gonna meet with Jim?
Yeah.
To figure out what needs to be done.
Sure.
If we go by with the, the list that I sent to Emily, okay?
Yeah.
And I, what I'll do is, I'll get that off my computer and I.
I have it right here, yeah?
Yeah. Send it to him.
Wait a minute.
Okay.
We're, we're doing a, we're doing an as-built review based upon the memorandum of decision, the plans filed, and the issues on the punch list, which a review engineer is gonna get together with you two, okay? Get those things together once he reviews them and sees what's there, what's not, what needs to be changed. Because if you're missing a couple of things and we need to, the board needs to address it, then that's what we gotta do. So.
So, so, you guys are one thing, or whatever you board, I guess, but you're kinda saying two different things.
I know.
I wanna, I, I'd like to clarify from my understanding, because I'm not as smart as you guys on this stuff, okay? So, you're saying, Mr. Freer, we have an email on the eighteenth of August, and if we get everything done on that, then you're probably comfortable with this, like where we are.
What was there, there was? The, the only other thing was the fire hydrant, the location of the fire hydrant.
Okay, so, so this.
But I don't think we can do anything, we can't put it in the cul-de-sac.
Why not?
That's where all, that's where all those storm drains are.
All of them?
Yeah.
Bobby, is there any room in there anywhere? Well, I don't know. Once we get a, you guys put this in.
We might be able to solve that issue.
What's that?
We might be able to protect the fire hydrant with the ball, I mean.
Yeah, the ball is, the only problem is that this is, I mean, you got a nice house, ten feet out your front steps, you got a fire hydrant with a protector in it, so it's.
I don't know if there's a problem with it.
Is there, yeah, is there, is there any place else?
Well, we don't have any letter from that, that homeowner at this point, and I don't like.
It's in the right way. That's our building work.
Why are you just trying to bring the problems constantly? I don't get it.
It's my job to make sure this is done properly.
Well, it's also your job to be somewhat reasonable, okay?
Excuse me, you know, this is, this is where I differ, I don't work for you, I work for these residents in this town and.
Sergeant at arms.
I need the board to.
Sergeant at arms over there.
Yes. Exactly. Jim, we have.
Jim, are you the.
Jim, a point of order.
Yeah, I think I am.
We have, we have a review engineer, we just motioned through, let's let these guys get together and do what we've done for over two and a half decades, and review the plan and see what's missing. We got a punch list, let's have Woody review this as well, come up with one common thing, these guys work it out, and then they present it to the board, just like we've been doing.
That's fine.
This is, you know.
The only problem I have is, there were modifications to the MOD after the fact.
Well, then it's gotta be recorded.
What you have to go by is the plan we signed, because that's.
Well, that's, I, I believe in, in over twenty years, that's what we've done in the review process, to make sure that the memorandum and the recorded plans all jive up with what's left, and make suggestions if they're not. We've done this every single time, this is not the first. This is a wacky thing in this subdivision because a couple of things happen.
We'll get on to the other thing that you think ought to get done, okay? Mr. George is here tonight, I'll read his.
I'm confused, though, and I understand, Mr. Freer, that you want to move on, but I just would like to get, so, so, can you get one of these?
Yes. We'd like to take, everything, everything we have here, there aren't any show stuff. I'd like to have a little bit of a conversation with the payer, to make sure he's on board, and have him meet with Bob, and I and that, but all these other items can be handled without too much difficulty.
So we, we need to get on here?
Yes, he'll, he'll have some, I'm sure, Woody's been reviewing plans for quite some time, and we'll, we'll redline this politely, and I'll make the changes, and we'll keep on with it.
Pretty standard.
Okay.
Okay. I mean, the, the only other thing is what Mr. George has written in his letter, okay, to the board, okay?
We need to get a copy of that.
I'll give you this, Mel, well, I'll, Tony, you got another one? Letter?
You got it?
I've got the one finally, okay. Can you give them that letter? Okay, there you go. Let me read it, okay? All right, "As you are aware, I have attended several meetings regarding the property on Salem Street that is in the last stages of construction on Salem Street that is located on Sunset Circle. The currences that I had on, early on the process, have not been progressed to date. I still have the following issues with its development, and it directly abuts my property. One, the easement that my wife signed with the owners of the property, Wallace Capital, should be considered null and void as she was ill with dementia at the time she signed it. Also, to date, the easement has not been recorded with the Essex House Registry of Deeds and should not be considered a legal easement. Per the approved plan, a fence was to be installed to act as a buffer between my property and the street. The fence has not been installed. There are wood chips and debris on my property, and the property belongs to the subdivision that is unsightly and presents a hazard, as there are pieces of glass and debris mixed in. I would request that the wood chips, rocks, glass and tree debris be removed. The slope between Sunset Circle and my property is not reasonable and should be addressed. I'm not agreeable to large stones being placed, as it creates a hardship for me for maintenance on, of that strip of land going forward. Also, there is a concern of erosion, even with the stones, which could potentially fall onto my property. I was told that a retaining wall was going to be installed, and I offered to maintain the upper part, abutting the street after the wall was installed. If the developer is allowed to leave the slope, I will not be able to maintain my own property. The concerns listed above, I have brought to the attention of the planning board at several meetings. I have also communicated my concerns verbally to board members outside of the meetings. It is my understanding that all of the lots have been sold, which worries me, as I am not sure how the town is going to enforce any changes or compliance issues with the owners, which are Wallace Capital and Stephen DeHulu. I would like a response in writing as to what the board will do to address my concerns. As of this date, is my contention that the developers have no rights to be on my property due to my wife's mental state and their lack of recording any easement. I am willing to work with them to provide a legal easement if they are willing to adhere to the agreements that were made to me before the subdivision was approved." Okay, that's Tony's letter, okay? You have a copy of it. What we really need to find out, Tony, is, all right, we have a slope coming down from the street, comes out, some cases twelve feet to your property, some cases like about five feet. It's not, it's not the same distance all around it. And then it slopes down, okay? It's probably, I would say, the two to one slope at this point, at least. What do you want to do with that slope? Do you know?
Do you want us to meet you?
Yes.
Well, my concern is, right now, the slope doesn't meet the requirement of at least a minimum of three to one, which is supposed to be by law. And I'm saying, originally, let's go back a ways, okay? Originally, we were gonna have a wall. I agreed to go to a vinyl fence and place the wall, because, okay, Scotty wanted something that was cheap, or basically is what he was looking at, okay? And we had discussed at that point about him putting the wall down at the end, so that that slope wouldn't be that much of a slope, and the wall come up, and it would be, almost be, say, at a level land. This, with that, he could actually move the fence back if he wanted to, okay? Or move the wall up, either way. And all I'm saying is, I don't want him coming onto my land the way I could see they were gonna do it. Scotty had originally said to me, when we were talking to easement, that he was coming in no more than a foot. The problem here is, there's been a lot of verbal conversations, nothing in writing. And so I'm saying, what, Scotty, he said, yeah, he said, well, I'd like to think about it, just to see if that's okay. In the meantime, he gets my wife to sign easement, my wife having dementia, okay? Not really knowing what she's signing, but knowing that Scotty came along as a, a nice guy to us, more or less, the way he would present things, okay? And she thought it was okay. She signed it, I was on the phone in the other room, okay? So I come back and I said to Scotty, I wanna check that. He says, yeah, yeah, go ahead, check it, that's okay. But again, the verbal agreement was. Were you there when she signed? I'm sorry? Were you there when she signed it? I was in the other room, I was on the phone. But then you came in after. I came in. Now, listen, I was getting power attorney over my wife. If nothing else, my wife signs a document, wouldn't you have somebody that had power attorney to show that she knew what she was signing, to co-sign that, to show it was legit? Well, we're, we're a reputable organization, so we, we wouldn't want to be part of any situation where someone signs something and they really weren't capable to sign it, you know? And that, that was the case. And that's why I asked you. If I was in the room. Yeah. But if, even if I was in the room. Yeah. It should be co-signed, to show it was legit. Yeah, but it's that. Yeah. Okay, now, remember, my wife owned the property at that time, I own the property at this time, okay? You understand that? Yeah, I guess. My wife was the owner of the house. Yeah. She had dementia. I was told to take the house out of her name, and all that, and that happened along the line, okay? So now the house is under my name. Okay? So, what I'm saying basically is, what document was signed under her that long ago doesn't, shouldn't really pertain? Because the house.
As I've said before many times, Tony.
It should be with me.
We're not lawyers, we ain't getting into that one, okay?
What you want about that? Same with me.
What, what, what I, what I'm trying to get to, okay? This, this thing goes out kinda flat, then falls off the cliff, okay? But it does it in jagged responses. Like I'm saying, it goes out twelve feet in one area, okay, and five feet, three, four, six.
Two to one, three to one.
Yeah, it, it, it's, it's all over the place. If you look down a line, there is no line to that whatsoever at all. If you, if you filled it in, I think you really make a problem. If you cut it back, I don't know what kind of problem you're gonna get, to go to three to one slope.
You go to three to one slope?
Hmm?
Oh, three to one slope.
Three to one. I, I just don't know, you know, what you do at that point with that thing. That's, that's an engineering problem, that what I would rather do, he looks into that, Woody looks into that, they, let them concur what can be done. Now, if I go out by the street and I find the piece of wood sticking in the ground, okay, with a red flag on it, I'm assuming that's the property line. Am I right?
Yes.
And I follow that down to the next little red flag, then this thing, when I look down that line, everything's right at the bottom.
Well, I, right now it's monumental, perhaps I can show you in the field how it's, where the line is.
Okay.
We're not talking about the same red flag.
Yeah.
Is there a possibility where the, you know, the minutes, Tony, I did find the minutes where the wall, the two-foot wall, two feet down, two feet high, were, were referenced on more than one occasion, and we did talk about the easement plan where all this detail is and it's noted, we gotta find that. But is that something that might kinda solve some of the problem on a terracing? If the two-foot wall's gonna go in, and then the fence is gonna go behind it, don't we need some kind of terracing?
Well, you know, honestly, in my, in my opinion, the, the plan that was approved here.
Yeah.
Is the best situation. Aesthetic, like I tried to explain to Tony in the field, he said, you got a nice tomato garden.
Yeah, but that's in the back. What about the, I'm talking the front sideline, like, coming in right here.
Exactly the same area.
Right here.
Right here is the tomato garden.
So it's the as-built?
We were, that's the as-built, this is what was proposed. It was supposed to be feathered out at, at the gradual slope.
But I don't want you going on my land.
See, that's, that's.
Well, it's the fence.
See, this, this, this was, it was intended, because we had several meetings on it, and I'm not trying to.
Well, wait a minute.
I do.
Who was at the meeting?
The, the minutes clearly reflect a two-foot wall and a fence behind it, and I'm going with that, and you've got a plan with that. And so my question was, on this side, it's a two-foot wall.
The plan doesn't show the wall.
The variance plan shows the two-foot wall.
The plan doesn't show the wall.
Okay, would the minutes reflect it? Okay, we're gonna have to get to the bottom of it, because that's gonna be your solution to this problem. My question was, terracing, to put in a two-foot deep, two-foot high wall with a fence behind it, how far back do you have to go to terrace that to install that? Because that's what the wall was for, it was for vehicle traffic, not to end up in his living room if something hit it and also snow, when a plow comes through, it doesn't wipe out a vinyl fence. So it was a safety precaution, and it was also for visibility, for lights and everything else coming in. So how would we erect those two structures? And is terracing, because it might take care of this problem with the sloping at the same time?
It'll only come up maybe a foot higher than, you know, where the whole thing starts.
Yeah. Yeah, now Alan was, Woody, was Alan the review engineer at the time of the meeting?
Yes, yes, he was.
Because he's referenced in the minutes as well, talking about this plan and that the notes go on the easement plan for the two-foot wall and the fence. Okay.
Jim, can I ask one question? The fence, is the fence on Tony's land or is it on Wallace's land? Where is the fence?
Where is the fence?
Yeah.
Let's see if we can find it. If it's not here, I don't know where it's supposed to be. This is the grading panel, don't worry about it.
It's in the notes, on the recorded plan.
I think it was in there. Lisa, you saw it, right?
It's in there, I saw it myself, too. There's notes on it.
What is this line here? What is this line?
That's the street line.
Double line, huh?
Which line?
This is your street line.
No, not this double line right here. What is that?
That's a grading, and then this is the property line.
Oh, fence.
Proposed final fence. It is on the property line.
It's on what?
The property line.
So is the fence in?
On your side.
No, there's no fence.
All right, we'll build that fence.
Now-
But it's on your side of the property line.
Now, let me ask this question. On Wallace Capital's side of the fence is that's the slope, entirely the slope.
This shows where the slope is right now. That's actually now what was proposed.
It would be here, it would be against the property line.
The road holders to make the grading work better gradually, which is where the tomato patch is right now.
But I told, I told the contractor, we thought it was better, instead of the fence being right up on the street, to put the arbovites in.
It won't be on the street, it's behind the plant.
Here's the problem with the fence. I've got seven, I've got the same kind of fence around my property, $7,000 worth of it, okay? But it's quite a ways back from the street, because I've watched these vinyl fences for years as they've gone to work, and when the snow plows come through and they curl that snow and it goes that away, goes right through them. So we wanted that fence way back, if we were gonna do it.
It is, it's back on the property line.
And the wall was supposed to be in front of it, so that if a vehicle hit it, it wouldn't-
But there is no-
There is a wall. There's no wall on this plan, it's on the other plan. There is a wall, it's on the variance plan, and it's recorded in the minutes, Mr. Wallace.
And then, so the fence goes, basically this plan goes the fence against the property line. So behind all of your planting, at the top of the slope.
Since then, my contractors did put in some arbovites, kind of in lieu of it.
Right.
As Bob had said.
We actually, I actually think those are gonna be better in the long run, because they're gonna be higher, they're gonna push in, so you're not gonna see that road per se. Now, if the fence goes-
They're good for a screening perspective, but they don't solve any grading issue.
On their property, but on your line.
Or safety issue.
All right, you're not gonna see the banking.
The fence is gonna give me my privacy from people driving in and out of it, looking over into my property, okay?
No, we can't get it up that high.
Some privacy in my backyard. But that's basically what I wanted.
You'll see-
That's the reason for the wall, it's stolen.
It is, and it shows it in the minutes, and he's got it on one of the plans. So that wall is valid. And we're just gonna figure out if that's gonna help on the grading issue as well, I don't know.
What plan?
What plan, Paulie? That's the plan.
There's a variance plan that the engineer has, where the notations of the wall, the fence, and the agreement, which he claims is recorded, okay, that goes with this, and that's what we're trying to find. And in the minutes, it references that variance plan, where all the data Scott put on it.
You need to talk to Bob O'Hanley, because Bob knows that that was complete. You need to talk to Bob.
Well, it's in the minutes, so-
You know, there were conversations going on.
Accommodate Tony. I mean, he's in Butter. I mean, if we can, we have arbovites, and we did say we put the arbovites in place of fence, but, you know, if we can accommodate Tony somewhat and, you know, put, how long a fence do you want?
Basically, the fence could be, it could take her off on the ends, if you wanted, coming up, so to speak.
Scale forty?
Discussing. Basically, so when you're driving in-
Hundred and twenty feet?
You're not doing this, looking into my backyard, see what I'm doing.
Twenty, twenty feet?
It's like a hundred and twenty feet long.
A hundred and-
It's the length of his property line, is what's shown on this plan.
Hundred and twenty feet.
If your baseline's correct, yeah.
You're talking number of panels, they're like eight-foot panels. I think they're eight-foot.
And who's gonna maintain it?
They're about $220 a piece up here, where they were a few years ago.
Who's gonna maintain it?
You might wanna start at the rear of the house.
It should be on Tony's land.
Put it on Tony's land.
Well, then he can, he's the one that maintains it.
Wow.
Bobby could actually extend from the edge of the woods-
Yeah.
Over to the other edge of the woods.
Right.
Yeah.
So that's the one.
You won't get any sunshine on it tomatoes, guaranteed.
So if you're taking out, you know, we gotta get this wall issue resolved. As much as you feel it's not there, it is there, and we have to address that. You know, Mr. Wallace, you weren't even here for this. And so your attitude is really bad towards Mr. George, and it's in the minutes. All right, so let's work together here.
I'm trying to ask Mr. George how I can accommodate him.
Okay, and he did mention the wall, and it's in the minutes of the wall, and we have a plan with the wall. We gotta see what that looks like, though, that we don't have here, that's what I wanna look at.
If it's over here, I'll go over and I'll mow that grass wherever it is there, because it's not at an angle, so to speak, that I'm gonna worry about. So if I can do that, that's gonna actually be town land, but I would take care of it because it's on my side of the wall, I mean, the fence. You following me?
You might not like it, you might not want that supposed to go. I gotta think about this a little bit.
Well, I've looked at the trees, the way they are. Here's my concern with trees. The tree dies, who's gonna replace it? The town is gonna get here and replace it. Who's gonna trim the trees if they need trimming? You're gonna let these things go sky high?
I think they look nice.
I think they're better.
I don't need that.
No, that's privacy, too.
And they'll bush in and-
Here's another thing, who's gonna maintain the fence if the fence breaks?
I don't want you going on the yard.
I love my yard. How about the fence down in your yard? I mean, you're talking about taking away my slope in the back, but you're not taking it away from the whole, my whole property, you're just doing a section of it.
Tony, Bobby asked you a question.
It doesn't help me.
Okay, well, that was my suggestion before we met. But now I'm thinking, if you at least build back to an approved plan, you might like that better. It might be hard for you to visualize. I can help you again if you want to meet on site.
Well, I don't know how to get rid of the slope, other than, how do you get rid of the slope?
You feather it off.
Leave the slope.
Yeah, you're gonna go too far under my land, I don't want you-
That's true, if you don't like that.
I don't want that.
If you put the fence on your land, Tony, okay, and you leave the slope, you won't see it. You won't see the slope.
That's why I want the wall.
That's right. And let's be clear, you did want the wall, you still want the wall.
I think the only way to handle-
It's in the minutes, it's documented, so that's what we're trying to figure. We do have to see that plan, though, and can you get a copy of that over to our review engineer as well? Because it's referenced in the minutes that the engineers were talking at the time about it. So this is somewhere, and so we can get a better picture as to what we're talking about.
There were a lot of impressions of the fence with the wall, with the wall.
This was the variance, you know, the plan that he had, the easement plan, is the way it's mentioned, referenced. This is the Asbille.
No, this is the Asbille, this is what they agreed on.
Okay, the easement plan in the minutes references the wall, where Scott Steves put other verbiage on it that said it was to be maintained, and the finished product was going to be verified and approved by the board and Mr. George, and he wrote specific language on it in the meeting.
I'm not trying to disagree with it, I'm just going from my memory.
Yeah, so where's Scott? Does anybody get in touch with him yet?
So it's irrelevant.
The four to ones-
Yeah, well, you didn't-
It doesn't eliminate the wall.
You know, that's not it, because if it's a recorded variance and it's part of the memorandum in minutes, it does matter.
I don't want you going on the tree. See, you're taking away my, my-
No, we're not, we leave it-
My grass in the back, no, you're sloping more into my land.
You're right, that's what we recommended to you.
No.
Now, so we're not gonna do that, because you don't want it. We're gonna leave the trees, give you some more trees, give you a fence.
Let's find out what that plan looks like with the wall, because there's specific language that is on that variance plan, that goes with the memorandum, that goes with the plan. All three of these go together with the subdivision, and we will find out what it says. It's referenced in the minutes in three different places.
If you can afford to be some of that information, I'll-
Yeah, I can give you the minutes, I'll pull it right out. So I have no problem with that, I sent it to the board, too, so-
Probably five feet.
There was no wall.
If you want a wall, we should have it.
It was, it was on the other plan, it's on the other plan. The other plan was, he just told me it was recorded.
They're planning correctly. We left it away from the back part, so we got the sunshine on the tomatoes. He doesn't like looking at the woodchips. When you put the fence there-
Who's gonna maintain it?
And he did, there was a plan produced with the wall, with this agreement.
For the most part, they maintain themselves.
Well, yeah.
What happens to them, where's the wall?
A window?
Well, no, no, if it's on the backside and it's down.
No, it was actually in easement, a specific, it was a smaller plan, it wasn't this size a sheet, and it was in, and it came in with the meeting, and Scott wrote it in. That's what I was asking. But he said it was recorded, so we'll do it.
We'll look into the whole thing.
Jim, can I ask that for a second?
That's reasonable, we will come to a solution, it's just that, you know, it's what everybody's going through. And just for the record, it says in these minutes, which I'll give you a copy of, it says, Anthony George from Salem Street of Butter is before the planning board and concerns about the drainage. George State's developer took down trees and water now into his land, and George wants a wall two feet high and two feet deep, reported on the plan, developer wants to plant the grass on this one over here. And then there's two other minutes where it goes over, where Alan mentions the wall on the plan.
Can I ask a question to Woody? Do you have, I haven't had any of these, uh-
And what was the date on that?
I told you, I'm gonna get that.
No, I know that.
It's in the minutes.
But there might be a letter that-
Yeah, so are these. This was in 2015, and this is telling me it's complete.
There's plans flying all over the place for solutions. Just because they have one, it doesn't mean it's valid. There should have been a modification of the subdivision. And if it was a major modification, it would reopen the public hearing. If they deemed it wasn't, they could have decided at a meeting, but the memorandum of decision would have been amended, and the plan would have been signed and filed in the legislature.
Okay.
It'd be nice to see the letter that was agreed upon.
I agree, I agree.
But that didn't-
Somebody earlier means I couldn't attend.
I don't think it did.
Because of my wife's condition, I had a fever that caused it. So I couldn't attend some of the-
Okay, thanks, yeah.
You wanna give me, I think I got his, yeah.
High grades?
Yeah.
I'd like to pay one of his cards.
John, can you give me a card and Bobby a card, you know, so we've got, I know I've got your phone number and my list and all that. Did you guys get my list? I sent all the phone numbers and all that.
I think so.
No.
I sent an email, it's an attachment.
I don't think I got that one either.
I didn't even get an email from you this week.
No, I sent it last week.
Yeah, last week you sent it.
Did you?
Yeah.
Yeah, the minutes even record the vote. O'Hanley made the motion to approve the draft with changes, including the walls-
Yeah, I will.
And the fence, it was seconded by Bob Ericallian, and everybody voted unanimously, so it's-
To take it out, probably.
What was the date?
I told you, I'll get the rest of the minutes on that. I kicked these over there real quick.
What did he say, he turns things around that way.
But it's been three hours searching through them. But I'll get you those.
You give one, too.
Well, you can't have everything, Tony.
We're trying to do something, okay? We're trying to do something.
Okay, is that it?
At this point, I guess.
So you're gonna come up with a plan? What's me, what are we only gonna do?
Yeah, I think the better thing to do is-
We're trying to do something that we're happy with and you're happy. Good, good. That's what we're doing, Frank.
That would work, that would work.
Okay, that it? Thank you, gentlemen.
Well, then, shouldn't he not start doing any review or anything, so we get-
Well, he could stop reviewing everything except for the issue.
He could start doing, get a review of all the documents, he hasn't seen this stuff in a while, anyway.
Well, I'd rather hold off than right now, be honest to God, and then let's see all this other stuff gets done, and then he can start that review.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, Jim.
What?
If they do things, and then he reviews something that says that this needs to be done, that we're doing it three times, because we've already done it twice. So let Mr. Cammott do his review, review this list, the engineers talk like they always have done for 20 years, come up with a punch list and a solution. If there's a problem, Woody will present it to the board, since he works for us, and we'll resolve that. He will review all these other things, come up with the plans, et cetera, and we'll vote it in. This typically always happens behind the scenes, we never get this complicated with stuff, okay? So let's go through with that process. If you authorize them to go ahead and do stuff, and then the plans get reviewed, then we've got another time where we gotta go back in, and you may end up spending more money. Why would you do that?
No, I don't wanna do that.
Yeah, so let's get it all together first. We will agree on the review engineer's suggestion.
Well, we did the process, and the plan was filed, and I don't know what the hell we're doing now.
Isn't the plan ready?
No, it's here.
It's here.
Yeah.
What I'm trying to revert, really, is the cost going up.
The cost going up-
The same way it went up with Scott Green.
Well, that's, we don't work for Scott Green, we work for the residents of Groveland that put us in office, and we work for this town.
Yes, I forgot, you're a superhero.
No, it's what you signed an oath for, you know, to work for the residents. But, unfortunately, the cost did go up on this, but not because we kept redesigning the plan, it was your guys'.
You were at some of those meetings.
I did, and I read some of my verbiage in the minutes.
I sent two things, and you were there, and you signed a plan and everything.
Now we got a mysterious other plan.
Oh, mysterious other plan, it's somewhere here.
Well, hey, baby.
Stay tuned, everybody.
All right, so what are we doing with this change? Who submitted this change?
Thank you.
Who made this?
What?
Those proposed changes to subdivision?
Me.
Okay, so what are we doing? What's the rationale behind it?
Let me see if I can find it in all this tormented discussion here. Maybe I can recollect what the hell I was thinking. Okay. The first one, 4.9.3, changed to sidewalk on one side of the street only in a subdivision of 10 or less single-family homes. Subdivisions of 11 or more single-family homes would need to have sidewalks on both sides of the street. All planned unit developments would need to have sidewalks on both sides of the street. 4.3.1.1.5, reword to allow one tree with no branches below six feet. Bushes no higher than three feet, boulders no higher than three feet, and grass only around edge for three feet. Remaining footage to the center would be mulched.
Is this only in the cul-de-sac?
This is just the cul-de-sac.
Cul-de-sac, okay.
4.3.9.3, cul-de-sac roadway must be 30 feet paved to accommodate parking within cul-de-sac. Eliminate cobblestones from appendix detail A, typical cul-de-sac detail. You would have, Woody, you'd have to redo that, okay? Because what we're finding is, in a lot of these subdivisions, they park in the cul-de-sac. There's a car parked out there. So you can get a car around it, but you can't get a big truck around it, or a fire engine, okay?
That's what's happening.
That's what we're-
I think that's why the cobblestones were there, so you could use it for both.
Well, the cobblestones, nobody wants them. We've been waving cobblestones since we wrote the thing, so it's-
No, the cobblestone was included in the width of the road.
But the cobblestones are not mentioned, they're in the detail only, okay?
And you know, that's what happened, because we made a mistake on this one, they just left. We gave them a variance to narrow the road to 22 feet, where it's only-
Now we can't get anything around it.
Now that, right, now the 22 feet going around, it should be like 26 or 28.
So we could shrink the cul-de-sac, I mean, you have landscape piece.
Yeah, that's what I mean, the island, shrink the island.
Shrink the island, yeah.
Yeah, that's what we're proposing, that's what will happen.
You can change the subdivision regulations, make the cul-de-sac, what's it, 110 feet?
It used to be 120?
Oh, make it 120. Oh, it is, so you can make it, I don't know. I just think maybe shrink the island, but that's been the problem. Because I know when they're doing construction on other ones, the trucks come in, they run over the granite.
What you need to do is do an auto turn for the vehicles that you have in the town in the future. So that's what-
See, what we'd eliminate is this, okay, this would be, part of it would become-
An idle turn?
Auto turn.
It's a program that shows turning movements.
Shows you what vehicles would go in that subdivision.
The last one, 4.11.3, add no slope below three to one is allowed. What we were finding in the zoning bylaw is we might mention something like, okay, it's okay to do a three to one or a four to one, but you also wanna put your prohibitions in there as well. If you don't do that, you know, somebody's gonna walk up to you and say, well, wait a minute, just give me a waiver, so I can do a two to one. So if you have a prohibition in there, they can't ask for a waiver.
Woody, what's your input on that, on the three to one, is that an issue?
I totally agree with you.
Okay. The only concern that I have is the first one on the sidewalks, again, because we tried so to get that in there, and I know we waive them based upon, you know, each subdivision is a little differently. We've got 97 putting in this beautiful, nice cement one, but again, as a parent of three kids that did push strollers, and I see a lot of them out there today, I think that we ought to at least I think that we ought to at least keep that in the regulation. And then if we waive it based upon the board's good judgment and there's a reason for it, then we can continue to waive it like we've been doing. But I don't think we should change the reg on allowing sidewalk. Because what that also did is sometimes we use that as a bargaining trip. We've been able to eliminate the sidewalk on one side and use that funding for something else for the residents in the cul-de-sac. So that's my only concern on that one.
We live on a street, and I don't park. And we got, you know, sidewalks on both sides of the street, although we gotta park in between us. And they're still pushing baby carriages in the street.
Okay, I can't speak for that, but I know in our subdivision that initially we had over 70 kids. Everyone was running out of sidewalks, so they had to push in the street because it's only on one side. But where they can, it's especially the five footers, the three footers were a little narrow, but the five footers now that we have in there. So my only recommendation for that would be just leave the reg the way that it is, and let's go and waive it as it comes up in the subdivisions that we've been doing.
Come up every time.
Well, that's okay.
All the eight home subdivisions that we're doing now is due to the affordable housing part of the bylaw. That's all you're gonna be doing. They'll be doing eight at a time. And they're all gonna ask for the waiver.
But if a new subdivision goes in on the main street where that we have sidewalks already on that side, this is one of them, actually, that it would loop around. But that would be my recommendation on that, because we tried so hard. And we did get a lot of, even through the town study that we did in the questionnaire, there were, people were asking for more sidewalks in the town for that reason. So that would be, or just leave it the way it is on number one. I agree with the other changes.
Long-term maintenance.
Yeah. That's where I'm coming from, too. It's a maintenance. I mean, when you have a state road, you know, it's a county road, 97.
Yeah.
And there's a sidewalk. It's about, was it six foot wide? It's on one side.
So what about the liability?
113 was the same way when they did it.
This is my concern. What about the liability? So we build a brand-new subdivision. You put this reg in there, okay? And Granny's pushing the stroller with the kids in it, and there's no sidewalk at all, okay, where it goes through. And then they come back and they say, well, okay, you're liable because you waived the sidewalk completely out of the regulation.
They'll turn that around for you. What's the liability in the winter? Because they don't give him...
A sidewalk.
...bombing capability.
Hey, I've been...
And Granny's out in the middle of the road pushing the same baby carriage and gets hit.
I agree. I've been preaching that sidewalk cloud, too, for a long time.
Yeah, we have one, but we can't do them all. That's the trouble. You know, we can't, like...
How wide is that cloud?
Where you live, it's on one side of the street. That's where it should be, one side.
Yeah, so why don't we...
And yours don't have it. A lot of streets in town don't have it.
A lot of streets.
That's why the town study said put them in, and that's what we've been doing. But I'm not objecting to waiving sidewalks on a case-by-case basis. I'm just objecting to the reg change. That's all.
I like the reg change. I didn't know Jim was gonna do it either. This, so it's single?
I do like the all PUDs.
If they were to go in there and everybody do duplexes.
Need a public hearing anyways.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. I know that. I mean, I've been floating this thing for almost a year.
You're gonna get input as a board.
Oh, yeah.
On people on sidewalks as well.
So why make the change? If we're gonna do it on that?
It's all we do is waive it.
So why? So let's just go case by case.
We'll have a public hearing and have the vote on it.
But if you put it in the reg, they're not gonna put it in there. So that's what I mean. If you change this regulation that says it's all the time, there might be conditions where it's gonna be on both sides. And we don't know that now, sitting here, because we don't have a plan in front of us.
All they're doing, I can tell you right now, is building cul-de-sac subdivisions.
Well, that's today.
Nine times out of ten, they're coming out on a street that doesn't have a sidewalk.
Sunset would have been good on both sides, because there are actually sidewalks on that side, so... But anyway. So I agree with everything else on there, but the change on 3.93 on the...
We just went through that.
On the less than, on the 10 homes, I do agree with the PUDs' language in there. So that would be my only reservation on that. Everything else, I agree with.
Well, I wanna take it forward. That's all. You know, we'll listen to the people that come in and tell us what to do.
Okay.
Okay, I'll go with that much, okay? Um...
Anything else?
Homestead Lane.
Oh, yeah. Okay, off the record, Homestead Lane.
Old Business.
It's what known as...
Old Business.
Old Business, okay. Yeah, that's a good one. Old Business.
Are you adjourned?
We're adjourned.
Although, can't really do that.
We'll run it under Old Business. We'll do that, okay? In fact, I'll make that part of the record from now on. I'll do those Old Business. Okay, Homestead Lane. What we got from via the DeHulles was a roadway as built instead of a subdivision as built.
But it also says subdivision as well, but it's not.
Where? So, I mean, it's...
You didn't give me this plan. This is the Asbilly. You gave me the straight stuff. So there's two plans.
But you...
See, what you did is you kept the Asbillys and you gave me this for the subdivision plan.
Yeah, there's two.
That's why I had three plans. So this is... The odd thing is, is that...
All right.
The street acceptance plan has Asbilly site plan. It's just a cat hour.
So that's all you're gonna need, is that one page?
No, we have, I already have the street acceptance plan.
You gave it to him.
You already gave it to him.
All right, but we don't accept the street.
No, 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 no.
Okay?
Here's the process. Let me tell you the process.
Tell them the process, buddy.
At the end of the subdivision, you are given two plans. Mr. Hargreaves did it in one plan. It's a street acceptance plan, which shows all the bounds and the necessary lock corners being set. With that comes a warrant article to go to town meeting. But the planning board has to vote to the town meeting. They either sponsor it on the warrant, or the owner sponsors it on the warrant. You then make a recommendation. So you need a street acceptance plan, all the bounds set, all the bounds checked.
And then a warrant article.
The second is the street Asbilly plan, which shows all of the utilities, the pavement, the grades, so that you can compare it to the approved plan.
Okay.
Okay?
So compare it to the proof, the definitive plan that was filed, so...
But I can discuss the issues we already found on the street acceptance plan. The original plan was done by port engineering, filed in the registry. And the original subdivision plan requires granite bounds set at all points of change on the right of way plus front lock corners. Requires all iron pipes to be set at the real lock corners. Required a couple granite bounds to be set on this easement line. Those have not been set. The bounds on the curvature points have been set according to the plan. Have not been set on the lock corners. Many of them lock corners are iron pipes. They might have been putting in iron pipes to begin with.
Right.
Okay? And some of the real lock corners are in, some are not.
Didn't they have that conversation with us last time where they didn't want to do that? They wanted to go with iron pipes all around.
They stuck with iron pipe.
Okay, so if wood is...
Cased in concrete. Yep.
Okay, in case of concrete.
Yeah, because there were only a handful of the front lock corners that didn't fall at the corner.
Okay, so we did...
Yeah, we talked about that last meeting.
We did talk about that. I know we did. All right, take those with you, okay? I'm sorry. I just grabbed three of them out and never...
Yeah, you gave them. That's what it is, because that's...
Because I ran over there within about a minute and closing the door, that's why. He was gone.
Well, that's when they usually give that street acceptance and the Asbilly.
I'll call Gina back tomorrow, and so she hasn't had a heart attack by now.
No, she's... No, he has both of them now.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll just let her know we're all set.
He's all set on that.
Okay, motion to have the committee general review Homestead Lane, Asbilly plan, and produce findings.
The street acceptance plan?
And street acceptance plan.
Second.
Oh, Nick.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. You may have a sleep.
We're good. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay.
Jim, I'll be in touch with both of them.
Okay, all right.
I'll see you next week. I got a meeting.
Oh, okay.
Well, it's in there.
They said it's not on the plan. They can't, you can't force them.
Oh, yeah, we can. It's in the minutes, and we'll see what they're gonna come up with. It's in the minutes, so they get a plan, and there's another plan.
He's talking about putting brown cover on that slope, you know? Hypothetic, ground covering and all that. What's stopping the stuff from coming on my land?
Well, it was always discussed on a wall, and there was a draft plan, and Bob O'Hanley made the motion. I read that into the record, into the minutes, to have that produced on the draft section. And there is another plan that shows that. And Hart Graves has said he had it, so we'll see what he does with it. We'll find out.
So what do they get? They had like two weeks to come back with a...
They actually said they're gonna, the engineers are gonna go over stuff and see what they got. We got anything else?
Do you have any idea when they're coming back with some kind of a proposal?
No, the engineers have to talk, so...
Yeah, it's gonna be a while before they show up there and everything, so...
Okay.
Let them bang heads for a while. No, I don't have anything else. I mean, we will be getting two more. I think I told the board this last time. We've got a couple of industrial applications, you know? One is at the end of Nelson Street, okay, and it's coming in. And as a site plan review. And the other one is in the old Trimount pit behind Nelson Street, which I don't think we can even hear.
So let me ask you this. Informally, if they come to me and say, what do you think of this, this, this? Can I say yes to something without you people seeing it?
Well, we would rather have this done at a meeting, okay?
Right, that's what I say.
Yeah, get it on the record.
You're on board.
He's gonna come up with a...
Yeah, if you're on board, I want you to be on board, because I don't wanna have these things keep going on and on and on and on.
Yes, I agree.
All right?